Good afternoon.
Let's go.
This is the Thursday, October 2nd, 2014 meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. We have established a quorum, barely, and we have two members absent. First of all, if anybody is anticipating speaking before the commission, would they raise their right hand? And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth as you know it to the planning commission today? Okay, thank you. Disposition of minutes. Nancy, Mayor, is there anything that you would like to point out, change?
I did not see anything that needed to be changed. So I'll move that with accept of minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Moving on to cases, case number 14-11, the Surge Center, University Estates, Title 41. Does someone want to come forward? And if you would, please state your name and local address if you're from Athens.
... 675 State Avenue, 56.
Okay. Do you care just to introduce us again to the project?
Yeah. You should have plans for the Surge Center Development and Utility Design for Title 41 approval. The project consists of construction of a new medical facility and includes construction of storm sewer, sanitary sewer water main, and [inaudible]. So you'll see on page two, we have [inaudible]. [inaudible].
We're supposed to have three ADA accessible parking spaces. We have six. And bicycle parking, we're required to have four spaces, and we have six also. You can also see the percent impervious area that we are adding to the project. And feel free to ask questions while I'm going if you see anything. Have a couple retaining walls going in, a sign in the front, and a bioswale on the south side of the property that will be collecting most of the stormwater off the site. Page three is just site details. And page four is our erosion control drawing. And page five is our zoning map, and it's Zone B3. And we are, our building is 200 feet from any residential zone. We're good there. Are we all caught up here? I don't want to skip too fast.
Yeah.
Okay. Page six is our bioswale detail, and like I said, this will be collecting a majority of the water from the site. And we actually have a perforated 15-inch pile that'll run underneath this to collect any in case of a larger flow. And we also have an overflow catch base in at the end of it. And that will drain to the existing storm on University Estates Boulevard. Page seven is the architect's rendering of the building and also the floor plan. And page, the next page is the landscape plan prepared by Greenleaf Landscapes. And our last page is our photometric study showing the lighting of the site. Any questions?
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Well, I went out and visited it, and I guess that we're assuming that the one entrance will serve both lots.
Correct. Yeah. It'll be a shared entrance, and we have a 50-foot ingress and egress easement for the [inaudible].
And the road is, the entrance is at the grade it will be except for pavement, right?
Correct. Yes. The University Estates is currently about a 10% grade, so we have to match that with our driveway.
So there'll only be one cut through the Boulevard at this point?
Correct.
For both, that would serve both lots?
One curb cut, yeah.
Okay. I'm concerned a bit, and I talked to your boss or who was the last one?
Yeah, Ryan Buckley, yes.
Ryan Buckley. I'm concerned about the height of the exit entry area. You know, I may just be overreacting, but I, you know, as you get older, you get more.
Are you concerned about?
The visuals from up the hill?
Okay. Site distance?
Yeah.
That shouldn't be an issue.
Done calculations.
Yeah. We have our program, we have an internal program in AutoCAD that is able to do that, and it shouldn't be a concern. Should be able to see all the way.
I guess it's, I don't know how fast, I've only been there a few times, but I must say that I think it'll be better than the dirt hole that's there.
Yeah.
Or the strip mine or whatever we call it.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
Okay. I'm a bit, I'm still a little bit concerned about that if there's a lot of traffic, because there's so many opportunities for movement with people, but I'm probably overreacting.
I think most of the traffic is going to be coming from the south, from 682, so you're going to be having.
Turning and then going into.
Yeah, turning left into the building.
I was thinking more about egress, as you say.
Right, yeah.
Which will go to 682, which will go.
Yeah. And the site distance that way is obviously, you can see all the way.
Oh, if it's AutoCAD, I guess I believe it.
Well, that's what we.
I was joking.
No, you're fine.
Okay. Basically.
Mayor? Kevin Fletcher? I, the only, I'm looking at the review from the Title 41 from various departments.
Yes.
Did you get a copy of this?
No, that, I probably [inaudible].
Okay, why don't we do that? The one that jumped out at me as I see the police review said that they'd like to see the plant, the lighting and the parking lot, but we've got, the other side of, of course, has to do with, you know, we always have to deal with light pollution too, so it's got to be a balance.
Right, right.
Okay, why don't you go, basically we had the staff review it. This is how the Title 41 works. And John presented this to us just this morning now, so why don't you go through it?
Yes, that's correct. As you guys remember, the 18-year-old communication a few weeks ago, this is the site that we had a lot split on back in, it was June 19th, the planning commission on this current site. Sounds like everyone's been there. The site is Zone B3, so it isn't permissible use for this, used to be there. The surrounding land uses, it's the Grand Vista Village apartment complex, it's to the east of it, up across the street, and it's vacant land on the other three sides of it, all the way around it. The different departments that reviewed it, I can go over each one, my office, code office, like I said, it's Zone B3, it's an acceptable use. It met all the requirements for setback, height, lot coverage, which is not an issue in V-zone. They did require 60 parking spaces. They have 65, including six accessible spaces. The dumpster, I will need a screening detail on that.
Right. The architects working on that.
Okay. Shade tree, I can get them on the agenda for either this month or next month. I'll have to talk to them about that and get that going through. Lighting, they did submit a lighting plan. That's the top page, I believe, sitting up there. You don't have, but I looked through it, and at the time, we did not have it when the police chief or captain made his comment, but we have since gotten it.
Okay.
And then the bicycle parking, I come up with five spaces required, but in any instance, they're, they have six, so they're okay. At Apollo, who's not here today, city planner, he had no comments. He said everything looked okay to him in regards to the project. The fire chief, Clinton, did you get his comments? I did send him.
Yes, yes. Was that yesterday, I believe?
Yes. His comment was that he'd like the fire department connection at the front of the building on the southwest corner, not to the rear where they currently had it, so that they didn't get trapped in back there if there was a fire to the back. So the hydrant location where it was at was okay. He said they can run a hose from there to the FTC hookup. And then the common comments that the fire chiefs usually make, the unencumbered panel at the front entrance, the lock box at the front door, and the cutout for the median on University Estates show accommodate turning radius of trucks, so we'll need to make sure that works.
And that's another AutoCAD, AutoCAD program.
Okay. The police, as we discussed, their comment was about the lighting, and they have accommodated for that. And Public Works, Andy had a few comments, and that's the attachment that you have there. All of these are really minor. The only one that we were really emphasizing was that that easement is recorded that we've talked about for the shared access, that Nancy, the question you were just asking, that it has a shared access easement, and that we accommodate that water line issue that we discussed during the last meeting, make sure that it's within that easement as well.
Okay.
And that'll be, that'll be done.
John, is, why do we own underground sprinkler lines there?
I don't know. I don't think he meant the sprinkler. I think it's a feed line going to our, we got a lift station.
Yeah, there's a two-inch line that will be abandoning in place and tying back into just south of our site.
Unless they call it a sprinkler line. What it is for, it's to provide water into the lift station for lack of flow to help move things through.
I mean, I have an idea, but I just wondered about 01. I just seemed.
01, address the [inaudible].
Yeah, interline sprinkler line, unless that's what they call that line, that's feeding the lift station.
Because I was trying to think of why.
But that's what he's referring to, is that, I assume is that line.
I assume it has a backflow, though.
Yeah.
I would hope so. It's probably made so there isn't a problem in that.
Okay, so they're going to abandon it and relocate it, is that right?
Right. On the site plan page of your plans there, we show that we're abandoning the section that.
We discussed it last time, but didn't have a [inaudible]. I'm not going to ask [inaudible].
Okay. I think one of the conversations we also had last time was whether there's any feedback from the associations up there. Did you, I know you put a sign up for Title 41, I assume, did you get any questions about that?
We've had to sign up for two weeks. We received, two people came in and looked at it. One of them was Mr. Wharton. He, I can't speak for him, but he didn't have any issues. And another one, I had a lady that lives up at Aldermot that came in and just took a look at it. Her only concern was that on occasion, we get people out of the Grand Vista, or they get people out of the Grand Vista project that'll actually pull out and go down the wrong side.
Oh, really?
The split between the roads. But, I mean, you know, I, I said, that's, yeah, what do you say?
I don't know if we can design around that.
So that was the only comments and feedback that I received.
Has the lighting plan been turned in as far as?
Yes.
It's over here, I think.
It's over there, yeah.
I had it on my last page, I don't know where.
Could you describe it just briefly?
Yeah. It was actually prepared by the architects. They have basically spot lighting points that show the number of lumens that each spot will receive based on their lighting selection.
That's me, sorry.
Is it going to be closed at five generally, because it's not an overnight facility?
I think that's correct. I'm not sure.
So the lighting will be.
Yeah, it's [inaudible].
Well, I don't know, I shouldn't say that because I'm not sure. Because it could go to nine if they were.
Eleven.
Is there sufficient?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the worrying hours.
I see the lighting mark, marks here. As far as the actual very front of the building now, is there sufficient lighting?
That's required by State Building 2.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And it looks like you have one on the back, that would be the north west corner, but I don't see anything on the northeast corner of the building. Is that?
Any lighting on?
Yeah.
On the University Estates?
Estates side, yeah. They have some up the median, I forget. Do they have any?
Yes, there, actually, you can see a existing light pole.
Oh, the pole right there, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there, okay.
Kind of halfway between our catch base and then.
Okay.
Will that be sufficient lighting as far as?
Probably. It's going to be a daytime operation. I was just starting to think in terms of security of this end of the building, that's all.
Okay. Should there be some sufficient lighting in the very front as far as the ingress egress area? I don't see anything around there.
I believe, well, the, we actually have three in kind of.
Like the very.
Bioswale there?
Like the very entrance.
The very beginning of. I believe we'll have sufficient lighting, but if you need anything.
Nancy, do you need local?
To verify that, we can.
RJ, actually, it might be just the opposite way. The code requires a maximal amount of lighting, that they can't exceed certain lumens at the property line. So I feel that they're at that and maybe a little beyond, well, it'll be okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, anything from the public that would like to come forward?
I did have a key question.
Can you change places with him? Come to the podium, state your name and your address, please, for the records, sorry.
My name is Majid Kershia. I'm at 25 University Estates Boulevard. I also manage Grand Vista Village up there. I had a couple questions, just to make sure I'm clear, because I haven't got to see any of the plans yet. I wanted to make sure, the entrance to the new project, will that be coming up Grand Vista Village and essentially making a left at the Estates to enter, or is there going to be a separate entrance on 682 to the project?
It's part of the University Boulevard entrance. So you're going to go off 682, you're going to go off the median, it's going, they're going to create a curb cut. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this.
You're right.
So there'll be a curb cut, and I believe it's right across from Grand Vista, right? The bottom?
Yes, that, the entrance is actually south of Grand Vista Village.
South of it? Okay.
So, okay, so essentially where you would enter our complex, there's going to be an additional curb cut to go into the project from there, so.
A curb cut across the median, is that what you're asking? Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, just want to make sure I was clear there. And also in regards to construction, I don't know if this is a question you guys can answer now, are there required times, because obviously with a lot of residents up there, are there required times that construction is allowed to take place and not?
There is on code.
7:00 AM, I believe.
7:00 AM.
7 to 7, I thought it was.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, 7 to 7 is what we should do.
If they start in winter, it's probably going to be later than 7, because it's not daylight yet.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Those are the only questions I have.
Okay, yeah.
So can you stop your fire from going down the wrong side of the street then?
No. I can do my best, and I can shoot out an email. That is actually a legitimate concern. Some of our international students aren't as familiar, and even sometimes when people get used to it, yeah, you don't have a divider line in there, and sometimes it can be a little unclear to people not used to coming out of there and going left. So I'm happy to send an email to everybody to do my best to explain that so we can avoid any collisions up there, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the commission at this time? Okay.
I would move that we accept this Title 41, case 14-11, with the conditions that have been put forward and as presented, I believe. And of course, it's contingent on the tree commission meeting, too.
Right. And the entrance statement.
Easements, yes.
As long as they're articulated for sure.
We will make sure that that is, they will go get their permits from the State Building Department, and then when they come back, they'll come back to us and submit for their use permit at that time, and then we will, by then, they will have to have these easements in place, otherwise we will not craft the use permit.
Anything else? It's been seconded. All in favor in case 14-11, Surge Center, University Estates, with the conditions put forward as well as tree commission results and easement results? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Great.
Thank you. Alan McMillan regarding the Old Frontier Building, another Title 41 project.
This is communications at this point, yeah?
This is communications, right.
Hey.
Just three copies down there.
Okay, yeah, pass them around, man.
Thank you.
Before they begin on this, I think it's important to note that they went to the BZA. I do not have the variances here, but there were like five or six variances that they needed, and they did receive all those variances for this project. So any questions you may have in regards to setback, or coverage, or anything like that, has already been taken care of.
Okay. And this is a B2D, or is this R3? Where is this?
This is R3.
R3, because it's back end of Congress.
Congress, yeah.
Just to update our audience, could you give us a description of what you're requesting?
Sure. Well, first of all, my name's John Valentour, RBC Architects, 131 West State Street. I think we've included some photographs in there. This building might not be very obvious to a lot of people where it's located. It's an abandoned, one-story building behind the Frontier Building, which is actually fronting on Washington Street.
One story or two story? Is it really?
Well, story and a half, kind of.
Oh, I see, okay.
Currently, the building at one point was, I believe, as far as we can tell, utilized to store vehicles and equipment. Its basement floor and its first floor are both concrete, poured concrete. And obviously, it's been abandoned at this point in time. And we're proposing, and we will be proposing to show you, and I think Alan has already got the variances required to turn this into a residential structure with parking on the lower floor, the basement floor. Be three stories, two apartments per floor, 15 total bedrooms. It'll be private with brick, we're going to preserve it. We've already gone through, if you look at the photographs there, you can see that there used to be windows located all around the building, and we've preliminarily laid out the floor plans to reutilize all those existing openings. So the number of penetrations that will be required will be minimal in the existing brick building. And I should mention, it's a, it's a, on the first floor, it's a 12-inch solid masonry structure, and we've had our structural engineers review it, and it's in good condition.
Okay. And all the parking necessary would be contained inside?
I'm going to, I'll let Alan address that issue.
Okay. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, Alan McMillan.
Could you state your name, I'm sorry, and address, please?
Yeah, Alan McMillan, 209 East State Street, Athens. We have parking in the basement. There's six spaces you can see, and then we also have enough parking in the lot immediately next door that we also own, separate piece of property, but we have enough parking. And we worked with the code office to make sure that we were conforming to all the rules.
Would the dumpster have a new location?
We are going to go ahead and be good citizens, and I think it's needed down there for the businesses. We've talked to John Patsky, and we've, we're going to go ahead and let it stay there. Although, I will point out that that is costing us, you know, parking space, you know, for it to be there, and we just don't know where, I mean, people aren't going to be really putting their hands up and saying, "We'd love a dumpster." So given that it's there, in the spirit of, you know, cooperation, you know, for now, we're going to go ahead and do that, but.
For now. Would you put any type of screen or anything like that?
Yeah, John, John, address that.
We, for egress, we'll be having grade level egress onto the first floor apartments because it's coming around the side of the building, and we haven't totally got it worked out yet, but this dumpster will somehow be located under part of the access system, and we can put doors on it or something that will, heavy-duty ones, that will be able to conceal the dumpster from public view.
I think you should have brought along a hot summer day smell, too, because it stinks back there, really.
We will be hopefully cleaning things up.
Yeah, well, I hope so, but are you going to pave around where the entrance to the parking lot is, to the parking spaces under the building?
Directly in front of the building. The McMillans do own that property as well. I think that's.
It's like, it's 15 feet in front of the building. I mean, it's an odd shape, that it's property of the parking lot next door, that it goes 15 feet parallel to the front of the building, you know, along the basement, all the way up to the edge.
And that should be part of the scope of work that we will touch here.
As we get to the second phase or look at it. So I've got another question, and I'll stop.
Oh, go ahead.
How will you compare to, I guess it's Jim Cody's building with respect to the height of it? I can't tell, because it's, it's down a bit, so he won't be as high as his building is, will he be? It's 40 feet, I understand from reading your plans in the three floors, but I wondered how you're having, putting a roof in, the roof will be going parallel to Washington Street, right?
At least the two of those levels of balconies behind it will be looking at the back of this new building.
Okay. And the, the peak of the roof will go this way, so it'll be the, right?
Yes.
And so it's parallel to Congress?
It's parallel to the parking lot in front, well, parallel to Congress and Core Street.
Okay. Well, it, okay. Hmm, where's your stormwater going to go then?
Stormwater, interestingly enough.
It's always interesting.
There is a storm line in the building already, and there also is sewage. There's a bathroom in that. There's a four-inch all cast iron piping. Buckley's will be determining where things go, and.
But you're not going, you're going to put a bathroom in each place, not just.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying.
I'm going to tease it, John, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're not going to use that one, but there are services in the building. We do not have water. We're going to obviously sprinkle the entire building, so we have to work with Andy Stone, and this is, the Buckley group will be doing that on this project as well, and determining where best to get water. Not just water, but we have to have high-pressured water for a sprinkler system in this facility. And we've identified some storm and sewer lines in the vicinity, but just like in any other job, we will have to reattach and conform to the city systems with this particular project as well.
Is it essential, last question, if somebody brings up something I have to follow up on, but is it, is it okay to go through Cornwell's private parking lot, or?
Well, you know, we've got access through the alley right next door to this building, so it has direct public access.
Is it, how wide is it?
It's 12 feet wide.
12 feet wide?
Yeah. And the, and also, there's access from Alan's, Terry's parking lots on the north side of the property as well, which is accessed through an alley that is, I think, privately on.
Yeah, one of the things that, when we met, excuse me, I'm sure Ryan will do it, is we're going to require a survey and determine exactly how they're getting in, and if we need to, through Mr. McMillan's current lot, he may have to do an access easement or whatever it may be, but we'll make sure all that's tied in some way that there is way to get to it.
I'm, I'm a bit concerned about just people from, who aren't familiar with the place and how to locate themselves and all of that, but I guess that's more of an economic concern than anything else, but.
Does that already have a street address?
Excuse me?
Does that already have a street address?
Yeah, what is it?
Zero Washington.
Yeah, it did not have one, because the primary building was on Washington. This was just an accessory structure to it, so we'll have to give it.
We won't have so many visitors that way, right? They won't know where it is. All right, my, that was, I said my last question, but I just want to know, whose parking, if you had spaces out here, I was, we were, we fed the meter out to go to Kinko's, and there wasn't a space anywhere, and I just wondered, whose cars will be moved now from your parking lot, Mr. McMillan?
Well, we have it fully rented right now.
Oh, so you're rented, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But not Jim Cody's or somebody like that?
No. No, well, actually, in the existing lot, the adjacent lot you're talking about, right?
Right, the one you're going to use.
Behind 26 and 22, Congress.
You're going to use that, right?
Right. Yeah, and what happens is Donkey Coffee has 13, and then the apartment over, People's Bank has eight, and then we have, and then, and then also, John informed me from going back through past records, that we have to have 10 for the two buildings that are there, and then that leaves us extra spaces, 15 there.
And then you're using six of those for this building?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have nine left to.
Yeah. Yeah, they, 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 they sell out. I mean, it's a very popular place to park.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at the schematics of the floor plan, so the stairway is going to be exterior, is that what I'm seeing?
Correct.
Okay. No elevator?
No.
Okay.
No balconies?
Yeah, there's balconies.
Well, they're access balconies, they're not really...
Okay.
They have to get to the, into the apartments.
Okay. So really, two apartments per floor, so the balcony just gets you from one side to the other. Okay.
Would the roof area be storage space?
No.
No?
Hmm.
I don't know, who's going to take care of this?
So this is basically, then, just a introduction of the project?
That's correct.
When did you expect to come back?
Well, we're trying to get the drawings, I don't, we have to work it out with the code office, and the Buckley Group need to provide the bulk of engineering that goes with this, and I'm not sure, I've got a schedule exactly from Ryan yet on that.
Okay. You have to do a survey, obviously, that's what I'm hearing, right?
I think somebody's been there.
Yeah, we, we have.
We saw points, well, we have to do another one, too, so. There's been, it's been surveyed, but we still have to do the utility surveys.
Location of all the stuff, okay. Okay, let's see, I can't think of anything else. What is with that alleyway offhand that will be servicing this?
Did you say twelve feet?
Twelve feet, is it? Okay. I didn't catch that, I was reading, I guess. Okay.
I think it's an interesting project, it's a, it's a unique use of the space of the facility there, so, you know, I'm interested in seeing what you, you know, come back with, I think so.
Very good.
Anything else that anybody would like to add at this time?
No.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, maybe that will disappear, too.
Let's see, reports from the director of code enforcement?
Well, obviously, City Planner's not here, so he didn't add me to add, or ask me to add anything, so I don't know if he told the mayor about anything or not. And in regards to me, the only thing I can mention is we have the BZA meeting next Tuesday night, is, yeah, next Tuesday. We have two cases on the agenda. One of them is for a house that's wanting to do some additions, et cetera, on West Washington Street. I honestly can't remember the address off the top of my head. The applicant's Kevin Klein, he's done some properties around town before. And the other one is, was an oversight on my part, that I put on the agenda for the Christ the King Church, when they got their variance for the flood. I realized they should also have a variance for lot coverage. They're sixty-five percent, or the maximum is sixty, and I realized that's an R3 zoning down there, and I caught it after the fact, so I threw them on last minute to go through, not really increasing the footprint a whole lot, because that's where the cover patio's already at, but we'll just, we just want to make it right, so I put them on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Anything else to report from your department, that, that's it?
Not at this time.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
I am aware that the planner is trying to put together with the, I think it's the Start Presi, no, the Sustainability Commission, putting together a sustainability plan, a comprehensive plan for the city, and I think he's going to have that sometime next week, the tenth, I'm thinking. I may be wrong on that. We'll stay tuned, and we'll have, it's their committee, just to start trying to flesh out some plans for, for that.
Opportunity for citizens to speak, we're down to one person. Okay, great. Announcements and other business, oh.
Yeah, the one main thing I have right now is I'm going to appoint a Kristy Zep, Zepther to the planning commission. I spoke with her last week, met her, talked to her a little bit. She's actually recommended and pointed out to, and asked to serve by our planner, Paul Logue. She is right now the Assistant Director for Communications and Undergraduate Admissions at the university, but part of her job, and previous one, was planning zoning coordinator for City of, City of Grove City, I guess it is, and that she held that between 2007 to 2013. So she's dealt with, you know, issues of zoning, of floodplain stuff, so she seems to, she's certified as a floodplain manager, Association State, so she seems to be qualified, she has an interest, so.
Where does she live?
Where does she live? Good question, let's see. I do not have an address here. I should, Coventry Lane. Living Coventry Lane. And the conversation I had with her, she had an interest, and she wanted to, you know, get more involved in community and how it works, and outside the university context. So, the way I understand it, if I'm looking at the zoning at the ORC, I really don't need approval from council for this, I'll let them know. She said she'd be free to come to the next meeting, so she'd have some leave time to do some homework. And I also told her, talk to any of the commissioners if she has any questions, so she might tap you on the shoulder and ask questions. And that's the only thing I have.
Hopefully, this is the proper time to bring it up. I think, you know, we've gone through discussions about the various corridors leading into the city, and I know you wanted to get back on track as far as the B zones. Is this something that we want to begin contemplating now with the new member, and begin to move forward on that, and start to make everything kind of come together?
I suspect we probably should try correlating all the different corridors we've been talking about, with respect to Bs. Probably do some more homework along the way and say, "Okay, what are we going to, want to end up with?" But it's a, yeah, we want to keep moving forward, that's for sure.
Okay.
Another thing I'd want, I did make it to the Ridge master plan last night to see what's how they're thinking of things there. One of the conversations I brought up, of course, is that, you know, development of the ridges, whether it was the, the land lab area, or even just some of the, you know, the building area, is that, you know, we have, that is technically all an EI zone, which has really no parameters. So I said, "Okay, so what, you know, what is, you know, what," I think, the response I got, I said, "Okay, how, how does this fit in with a, an EI zone?" Because really, they're talking about private-public partnership, they went to Traverse City, I think, something like that, Traverse City...
I went in the afternoon.
Yeah. They did?
I went in the afternoon for...
Okay. Oh, yeah, so you know more about than I, you know, same thing. Same, same thing. Basically, they were looking at the same type of structure up in Michigan, and you could see that a lot of the, a lot of the buildings, smaller buildings, were turned into cafes and bakeries and little shops, so really what you're seeing there is that there's actually private entities on public land, and really, how's that going to fit is another matter down the road, especially when you start saying, "Okay, it's zoned as EI," you know, since when is a bakery or a coffee shop, an educational institution, but it doesn't speak to it one way or the other. So I think the response I got is that Paul Logue is working on trying to figure out what an EI could look like and what that means exactly.
More frightening is that the area adjacent to Kirage Hill is R3, and it's not really very good soil, or...
I point...
And they, she's talking about, she was talking, the principal that was, the female, was talking about using conservation planning, so I was, I was impressed a bit about that, maybe not, because that's been around for a while, but I thought at least they're talking about it. But I was, I'm very concerned about transportation, about access. I think it's very poor area transportation-wise. It's either going to dump people out on Richland Avenue, or dump them out on Blackburn Road, or send them through Eliotsville and Elkhurst.
They had, they had part of that, showing up at the, the meeting there, a couple things. When you talk about soil quality and slip prone, Bob Eichensberg was there, I referred to him, he said, you know, the stuff, the, the plans they have are a little bit higher density than I think they want to look at in terms of slip prone areas.
I agree.
Drainage would be an issue. They actually were floating the idea of a pedestrian bridge coming across from, I guess, it sounded like a long way to go. The drawing they had was almost like going from, almost from Tailgate Gate Park to the ridges, which sounds like a long span to me, how that would work. The other one, of course, is they, they kicked around the idea of actually bridging it at Schaefer to 682, which is an interesting concept out there. I know it's been floated before, but we know a couple things. One is 682, states usually loathe to add more entrances to a highway, regardless of how short that highway is. There are also, the Schaefer side is actually university property, actually, and we have an easement for that. That's the, what they used to call the Schaefer Street Extension, coming off of Union, and we'd have to widen, of course, the Union, Schaefer area eventually, too, that would shift that along. They were looking at transportation, they really, from what I could see, actually, they were trying to visualize as more as a pedestrian area, rather than cars. They were talking about putting parking garages there and parking and changing the mix there. Again, I'm aware of all that stuff, too, yes.
And I, I think they're unaware of the fact that there were at least two sets of plans for senior center up there and other different uses. I was thinking about, A Kirk was one of the earlier ones, and, I mean, thirty years we've been fooling around with them.
Well, that's it, they gave a link, and I have yet to go to that link. It sounded like that had mostly, they've gone through a lot of the old documentation and compiled it. I don't have access to their Dropbox, as far as I know, since I've never tried, since Paul Logue is my designate for this committee. So it sounded like they had a plethora of plans that have been put forward over the years, and they're aware of what the different possibilities were. And again, I asked for a timetable, and they couldn't really, you know, you know, they're going to go for the low-hanging fruit, but what that looks like down the road and how fast it would happen is another matter, and...
Did you, did they tell you that the new word for tearing down parts of building is called editing?
I think they, I heard them use that as a verb, yes, I think so.
Yes, it was editing. We took off the parts that were...
They reset the building?
Reboot.
But, you know, the thing is that the main entrance, which was on the left, is not useful anymore, is not usable, and the other one is kind of an afterthought, isn't it? And so, you know, and I just am so concerned about Derry Lane, because we're going to have that, I bet, that sewer line from the far southeast coming that way, too. Pretty soon, it'll be paved over to the recycle.
Well, you know, they were looking at existing structures, you know, the compost, what's up there now that's being used, cell tower, water tower, compost facility, Conica Research Center, you know, the, the main building, whatever the architect is on that.
Kettridge?
Kettridge, whoever put it together.
Kilbrey, something.
Yeah. They told, they said that it was one of his first projects when he designed it, though.
That's why they're clipping it.
It's like twenty-three years old, so, but what, I found some of the stuff of interest. I think, again, they were trying to bring consensus, and they were listening to the input in terms of public forum. They'll have another series of them, I imagine, too, because they just were saying, "This is where we are now."
I thought it was interesting they asked the public, "Which buildings would you tear down?" And, and it, you know, I thought, well, of course, they're going to keep the ones they can see along the road, because they have, most people have no experience with it.
Yeah, although I was looking at that, they showed some of them, some of the newer buildings actually were the ones they wanted to tear down, so the, the ones to the, I guess, east.
Sort of thumb buildings, right?
Yeah.
That's exactly right. And then, the other thing was that they were going to put an orchard up where the orchard used to be, before it was closed. That really made me laugh.
Yeah.
Would you believe that there was an orchard there before?
Yeah, how about that? They didn't even reference Radar Hill, so I was wondering about that, too.
I know. This is now.
Very briefly, getting back to the Bs and the corridors, is there a timeline that you're, that you would like to do?
First of the year, let's have something to counsel.
Okay.
First of the year? Okay, that means we'll have to really work hard there.
Well, I think that, I think I, you know, I'm a great believer in design, in designating, and I thought Paul and John were going to do a little bit.
We can do that.
I don't know, I'm not going to say, because...
They're going to do a little bit.
It's just win. Well, don't, don't hold us to the first of the year.
Okay, but I mean, I think that he, Paul was, was going to do something.
We were, we were, but...
Oh, I was supposed to forget it, I'm old and forgetful.
No, no. They'll work on it.
I was supposed to have an inspection scheduled done a month ago, I'm here, I...
One thing I did want to bring up is, in light of the upcoming, the pending opening of Bobcat Lane, there was a tunnel for pedestrians ever discussed to cross down where the current crosswalk is to kind of...
No.
...open up some of the traffic that has to wait, you know, the, as people straggle across the lines, things of that nature.
The difficulty with that is a lot of people don't like the tunnel by the roundabout. They always look at tunnels as scary. To make it work in terms of, for wheelchair accessibility, you'd have to really pull back to get a slope, or you have to do a bunch of switchbacks to get, to get a tunnel. They also, well, no, seriously.
Oh, I, I talked about safety when we first talked.
And the, and the Bobcat Lane area, actually, right there, that particular piece of sidewalk that hasn't been removed to make the curb cut, is there's tunnel under there. They have to design around that. They're going to act, if I understand correctly, the utility tunnel that's under there is almost flush with the sidewalk, so to make it, to build the capacity to take buses on it, they're going to have to do some redesign there. Realized when we were doing the Oxbow Bridge, though, we did add a stairway, they added a stairway on the west side of Oxbow, that would be the southwest edge, so you can walk underneath the, you know, you do have a tunnel, basically, you have Oxbow, used to be there wasn't any stairway there, so you had to go all the way around through the parking garages underneath Boyd, I think it is, I think, I forget the actual...
Boyd is one.
Yeah, West Greenside, so you'd have kind of zigzag through there. So they made a straight access, so you could actually come from Baker, go underneath Oxbow Bridge on the sidewalk there, and then go up a stairway, rather than have to cross straight across where Bobcat Lane is right now. And that was my concern, you open up that, and you're going to get not only traffic, but also pedestrians who just want to trot right up, because you'll have sidewalks on both sides, go right across, and that will be an issue. The, the crosswalk by Porter, the one where we have, a pedestrian crosswalk there, if you start saying, "Okay, how do we dig under there?" I'm sure that, I don't know where the utility tunnel goes past the Bobcat Lane, but I'm sure it probably extends further down, probably following the sidewalk all the way down, for all I know. So really, what you'd have to do is you'd have to build around a present underground tunnel, which is only used for utility, and then you still have to pull back almost, probably past the entrance of Porter, to be able to get that slope.
Has the city explored, or the university explored, then, a light that would regulate...
No, no.
Because basically, what you have is, when people walk across there, you can basically have a little string of just like one person, one person...
Texting.
And you're, you have twenty cars backed up.
Talking on the phone, listening to their headphones.
Right.
Not paying attention.
This was, well, this is my concern with Bobcat Lane. Realized when, from my point of view, when Bobcat Lane was suggested, we had just had the impacts of the crosswalk, that before my, my term of office, that was not a pedestrian crosswalk. And if somebody got hit there, we basically put signage up saying, "This is not a pedestrian park, crosswalk, do not cross it." I switched that over to the pedestrian side.
Thank you.
Well, yes or no, maybe not, he's saying no.
I mean, pedestrians are important.
Yeah, most of the time, especially when they're not driving cars.
No, they're paying some service in this town.
But when you're waiting for four or five minutes for, for one person to...
Well, well, wait, wait a second, you have class changes on that. The other thing is that technically, that's twenty-five miles an hour, and we're trying to slow everybody down from the 682 intersection, the roundabout intersection, and go proceed uptown and earn a slow met...
Sure, but there's a difference between twenty-five and zero.
Yes, there is. The other impact we had is when they added the Bentley Annex, because there used to be a line of sight when you're going around the president there, and as a result, you lost that access there, and the tendency there, because of the design of that gazebo area on Bentley Annex, is you get, step out, and then you walk straight across to, towards up Richland.
It's dangerous.
And that was another impact on Richland that occurred. So when I started talking about, "Let's do Bobcat Lane," it's like, "Oh, we'll have another chance for conflict in terms of pedestrian cars." So that's why we're looking to open it. Again, my thrust of it is that I want the go-bus to thrive as best possible. We still, as far as I know, we've signed off on the curb cut on it with conditions. We've put metrics together to compare it, on what a success looks like. What I'm told is they're still having to deal with the lower Baker pedestrian car conflict that's occurring there, because you have a lot of traffic there going on. I went there sometime about two weeks ago, about eight-thirty.
Oh, yeah, nightmare.
It, yeah, it was interesting how many students were zooming around, and cars almost hitting other students.
Looking for parking places.
Yeah, looking for parking, as well as the garbage truck was zooming back between Verterina's dumpster and Porter's dumpster, and then the, the Baker Center dumpster. And, you know, realize, this is class change, and they're backing right across the sidewalks to get to these dumpsters. Not that I want to talk more trash, but you realize there's a lot of, and then, then a go-bus pulls up, you know, so it's like...
A circus, all you needed was a tent.
Well, you can see that, that, you know, this is, this is an issue, and when you say put a light there, what you see if you watch the lights going on with pedestrians on Court Street, or, I shouldn't say Court Street, the ones that we have buttons on, which is Richland on Schaefer, and, and the tendency is, you push the button, and then when you get a chance to go across, you go across, you know, there's a lot of them, actually, that do follow the pedestrian signs, but some, so what happens? They push the button, they're across the street, and now it turns red.
Well, I wouldn't be talking about a push button, basically, it would be just during daylight hours, be regulated, you know...
With time, with the class changes?
Yeah.
But Tuesday's different from Monday, right?
Well, we can, you can program anything these days, right?
There you go.
Except when it gets those powers off, and then everything's haywire.
Yeah, that's true, I, I think at this point, we're probably, we wouldn't be learning, we've put more signage up, the other thing we're watching, of course, is they're putting their crosswalks on South Green Drive, they've added one, of course, a pedon from Impact Park, or Punch Card Park, whatever you wanna call it, they've got, they're talking about adding more, because now they have the Field House, that has to cross from Oxbo over to there, and that's such a wide swath, you know, tendency is to go faster than you should, and of course, there's one by Clippenger, at least two by Clippenger in terms of crosswalks, too.
And people just don't stop as much as they should, and the other thing is, that's the entrance to the grand circle, that is gonna have all the traffic on it, yeah, details, details.
Well, that's not my problem right now.
It's not my problem either.
Is there any other business that anybody wants to bring up?
We might have to push it forward, I was, I was precipitous to say first of the year.
We'll see what we can pull together.
All right, our next meeting will be October sixteen, two thousand fourteen, here at the City Hall, is there a motion for adjournment?
Yes, that's adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Okay.